Good evening. This is January 9th, and I am calling the Yountville Arts Commission meeting to order. Samantha, do you have roll call?
Yes. Commissioner Hudson?
Here.
Commissioner McDonald?
Here.
Commissioner Resnick?
Here.
Commissioner Meredith?
Here.
Commissioner Lay?
Present.
Vice Chair Capson?
Here.
And Chair Share?
Here.
Thank you.
Okay, Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So I assume you have all reviewed the agenda. Is there a motion to adopt?
So moved.
A second. Aye.
Aye.
Any noes? No. Approval of minutes from the December 2022 meeting.
I move to approve.
Thank you.
I have three minor points.
Yes.
Under the administrative regular items under A, a motion was made by, there's no name or second it, and I wonder if we want to add those or include them somewhere. I don't know if it's significant, but...
Yes, I can make that correction.
Under the literary subcommittee, it says the poems range from 50 to 30 words, which is kind of awkward. I wonder if we couldn't just say up to 50 words. And under the performing arts subcommittee, it says that the first one coming up is in January. It's actually in February. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff. Anything else? Then is there a move to approve? There is a...
There's a motion. Motion on the floor. Okay.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Okay, the minutes are approved. Are there any public comments tonight, Sam?
None have been received.
Then I think administrative and regular items?
Yes. Sorry, multiple tasks this evening. Go ahead and open this. So typically, these type of requests aren't one that you see on the commission. The town does have a naming and dedication policy that has been used several times as far as dedicating the reading room at the community center, or we have a dedication and donation of a memorial bench for Yountville Community Park coming up for the council. But the way that policy is written, typically those requests go directly to the Parks and Rec Advisory Commission for review because they have to do with a park or a facility in town, and then to the town council for approval. This one's unique in that it is a recommendation in regards to the gallery at the community center, and so I thought it was important to then bring that before the Arts Commission for its review. So staff received the naming and dedication request to rename the gallery at the community center, and I explained why that's relevant to this commission. And I included in there the application, which is a standard application that we have. The applicant is here this evening, Rhonda Share. So the application is actually to change the name of the gallery to the Steve Rogers Gallery at the community center. We discussed costs associated, which would be changing of signage and marketing materials, which would be a minimal cost moving forward. Outlined in the application were reasons that the applicant believes that this nomination is of value to the town and to the individual, with a lot of history, obviously, that Steve has with the town and his pending retirement. This is a very timely application for your review. I'll probably have Rhonda speak to that as she is the applicant, but the way that the process would work, that if the commission does vote to approve the request, then it would move forward to the Parks and Rec Advisory Commission as part of the process, and then on to the town council before it's formally approved. Did you want to say anything, Rhonda?
I'll say a little bit and then turn it over to the commissioners and the floor. This idea came actually on, I think, Monday morning from Robin McGee Cant, who of course is a former commissioner of ours, and it was like music to my ears. I just thought, how perfect. So I sent Sam a text and asked if I could drop in on her, and she said, of course, so I did. She liked it as much as Robin and I did, sent me the forms, and I did the best I could, but they're big shoes to fill to explain why I feel very much like this is a fantastic opportunity for us. With that, I'll ask the commissioners if there are anything, any comments or any questions about this. Jim?
Okay. First, I want to say I have the utmost respect for Steve Rogers for what he has brought to the arts in our town and how he's supported this commission over the years. I'm still kind of torn. I'm not sure we need to put a name on the gallery. It would, the gallery would then have the name of an individual. It would also be a gallery at the community center and possibly Yountville, the Yountville Community Center. So in press releases and communications, it would be a lot of, it would be a longer name than it is today. So I do want to throw that out. You mentioned a couple of namings that had happened. Would Vandeleer Park be another one?
Yes, so that predated the actual policy that's in the municipal code, but that is one. There's many. Bardessono Family Park, which is right next to the community center, is another one. Everything that has a name went through a process to be named as far as the parks. Some of it makes sense, like Oak Circle Park. I mean, that was part of the development.
Right.
But if at some point someone came forward and said, "I would like to request that Oak Circle Park be renamed," it would go through the same type of process.
Okay. And then my understanding is that from here it goes to P-Rac and then the council?
Yes.
Okay. So anyhow, I just want all of us making this decision today to kind of think about, you know, the naming and what it does for communications and so forth. And I'm not taking away from my respect and the desire to commemorate Steve with this name and what he's done for us in this room. So that's all I'll say. Thank you.
If I can comment on your comments?
Yeah.
Thank you, Jim. I can't think of a better representation for the commission than to call the gallery, the Steve Rogers Gallery at Community Center, at Yountville Community Center. Generally, when we do press releases, we shorten the name. It's usually the Yountville Gallery, or, and that's, there's almost an intention behind that when we do. Community galleries have a certain connotation, and ours are usually single artists, high-profile artists, as you know. And having a significant name attached to our gallery, I think adds prestige to the sound of it. I also understand that the name Steve Rogers in particular is widely known throughout the state and that he's admired by all. And the fact that we would have a gallery here in town is a real prestige point for us. So that's my thought about naming the gallery.
I agree with you, Rhonda, and respectfully, Jim, I do understand what you're saying, but also being in marketing, we call our gallery so many different things depending on what the press release is. And to me, this would now become, most of the time, Steve Rogers Gallery, period. Or in certain cases, we add the community center so people know where they're going because sometimes it is confusing. But if that's your real concern, I think, and I'm assuming it is your real concern, I feel Steve Rogers Gallery is very concise and to the point. It sounds wonderful, but most importantly, it is wonderful to honor Steve and all that he's done for our community, not only for our Arts Commission, but for the town over the years. And I think that issue would not be a problem, so I would heartily endorse this move also.
Jeffrey?
I appreciate you, Jim, raising the issue so that we're making as informed a decision as possible and thinking through all that it may, all the implications around that. I would tend to agree, I think, with Rhonda Noel in that it gives us a specific name for that and a more consistent name for it that I think might outweigh the challenges that, in terms of a longer name. So I would tend to also support that we name this. I think a more specific and consistent name would actually be fruitful in that way. But again, I appreciate you raising the issue so that we're thinking this, all of it through.
I would concur. I agree that I think it's a marvelous way to commemorate and honor everything that Steve has done, but I also, I have to say that, Jim, when you spoke up with those comments, you were reading my mind because I was thinking, but is this going to be confusing when we're trying to promote events and artists that we have another name, you know, as we're introducing an artist? But I think as long as we, as, you know, Noel said, that when we do our marketing communications, that we're not confusing the visitor with putting in a name of an artist and also with, you know, that we have a way to mitigate all of that, I think it's awesome.
So we have two guests in the audience. Sam, may I take some comments?
Yep.
Kim?
Kimberly Cook, and I'm a former member of the Yountville Arts Commission. Good evening, commission members. Thank you for bringing this idea forward. I think that renaming the gallery as a Steve Rogers Gallery is a fantastic idea, and honestly, I wish we could name the art walk for him, too. For those who are not here in the beginning, you might not fully understand what a profound impact Steve Rogers had on bringing the arts to Yountville. Although the idea was imagined by a few residents with a strong desire to see it happen, the current beautiful presence of the arts in our little town would not have happened without Steve. We had crazy ideas, grandiose ideas, silly ideas, and I'm sure it's sometimes very annoying ideas. But Steve was there for us. He was never discouraging us, but supporting us and steering us in the right direction so that our efforts were more purposeful, effective, and worthwhile. His influence goes so far beyond managing this town. He took it upon himself to guide our energy in a way that not only blended the arts successfully into Yountville, but also in a way that the arts have become an admired and sought-after feature of our town. Because of his guidance, his belief in nurturing our ideas, our ideas, and his never-ending kindness and patience, the arts are a part of Yountville forever, and it seems like renaming the gallery is just a small way to say thank you and to make sure that the history of how it all came to be never dies. Thank you.
Thank you, Kim. And for those who don't know, Kim was one of the original committee members, as was I, the dinosaurs. But thank you very much. Steve, would you like to say anything?
Actually, I'm here for another item.
Okay.
Yeah, but I just, I just say thank you, but wow.
Is it to support us or annoy us?
Probably both.
I have a risk management role on art selection.
Okay. Well, I know you've had a long day, weekend, week, month, and thank you for all you're doing out there. I know today in particular was quite a challenge, so... Okay, are there any other comments?
I'd just like to echo that I think it's a great fit. Steve comes from, you know, an artistic family, that he's been art champion, and that it would be a really fitting honor for him and part of his legacy. And I think that that's, you know, I think it's an awesome idea, so I'm all behind it.
Thank you. Jeffrey?
I'd just like to say thank you, Kim, for adding that historical perspective. As a newer member of the commission, I couldn't take that into account, and I just really appreciate you adding that in. Thank you.
Okay, thank you all for your comments. Anything else? You good? All right, is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
I'll second that.
Some motion and seconded. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any noes? The motion is carried. All right. Thank you all. Thank you very much. And Sam, will you just read the bylaws and the...
Yeah, I just put a little note update there. Just with the holidays, I didn't get that done, so it'll be coming.
That's great. The art fund report?
Yeah, so I included the reports in there. There's not a whole lot of change. If anyone has any questions, I'm happy to answer them. Most of the expenses that you see on the 015415, which is general fund, is the allocated staffing costs and a little bit of sales revenue that's come in under the public art program and the restricted fund for the art walk. Excuse me, our fund balance as of right now is $29,337. We've had some art placed with stipends this year, and we had a little bit of revenue come in for a piece that sold last year that he underpaid. So we caught up with him.
Which wasn't easy.
No, it wasn't easy.
Yeah, I know.
So we took care of that. I am having on my list to do some analysis on what we see coming in as far as building permit traffic, and I hope to give an update on that next month. And then there's been no change to the town Yountville Community Foundation Fund. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Our funds look pretty good in the Yountville Fund.
Yeah, the foundation has a nice balance in it.
It does. We're rich compared to most of them.
Yeah.
Okay, any questions on the art fund reports? Okay. The Art Walk Subcommittee. So Steve and I have talked about Windswept and Serenade II, the two bronze sculptures that we approved last month, the issue being bronze and security and so forth. I've spent a number of phone calls with Ghiberto, who is more than experienced with this. He's from Santa Fe, and of course, when the precious metal issues all started to happen, Santa Fe was greatly affected. So he's pretty well experienced on how to secure his pieces. We talked over several different issues, so he's in tune. And Steve is working on a closed-circuit camera.
Thank you, Chair Share. What I'm working on is some type of outdoor surveillance camera, so I'm doing some research. And then Sam and I and our Public Works Director will look at the exact locations to determine whether it's a Wi-Fi enabled or, for those of you that may be outdoors persons, you've seen some of those. So we think one with the artist taking some additional efforts and with us looking at some type of a surveillance so that if something was to happen. And then also, the other request that we talked about was that we wouldn't actually market it as bronze, so we would just, that way, nobody, you know, it's whatever it is, but we don't bring attention to highlighting it. So with those efforts, I think we can move forward with working on the installation of those pieces. So our team will continue to do the research, and we think we can come up with a reasonable means to provide protection, or at least an awareness, so that if somebody was hauling it off, we'd have a good idea of what it looked like. That is the one thing I'm still going to want to know, is where did those three lambs go? But anyway, we'll figure that out.
Thank you. Thank you, Steve.
I have a question. So do you think this will be the future? We'll have all of our artwork eventually under surveillance?
I don't think so. Please, no.
I would say I hope not, and I don't think we have, in the number of years and the number of sculptures that have been placed, we've really only had maybe two incidents, and one was actually the artist taking it back without telling us. So that was kind of fun. But I don't, but I don't think it's necessarily a bad thing when we have something that we may want to pay attention, because here, you know, one of the things that we do is we do insure the piece. So that can be costly if we have a few losses, and luckily, I don't think there's been a repeat of that, but I would hope not. I think Commissioner Meredith, that would, I would hope that we're, one, you know, the same way from a risk management perspective, I'm often evaluating, does it look flimsy if somebody climbs on it? What are the consequences? So my role is never to question the piece, it's to look at the risk management side. And this is a unique one that probably we wouldn't think about if we didn't have some past experience with, but we do. But I would also say we've had no real other issues. In fact, I mean, knock on wood, I don't, you know, with the number and the location, I think we've been very successful in general. But it is important that we rate and evaluate the art. It needs to be of that really, you know, good, solid foundation for outdoor public
Thank you, Steve. So Ghiberto is looking at the middle, probably the third week of February to install, and he's driving out, so we, I suspect Sam will need some help from Public Works, but he hasn't told me what all his needs are at this point, so... He's so experienced that I think it'll go pretty smoothly. We're going to say goodbye to Spyroll, which is James, it's actually Jacob, actually, if I wrote James, I'm sorry. Novengers, which is at the corner of Washington and California, and also McCaw, which is Yount and Fennel. These happen to be really coincidentally the two places where Ghiberto's Windswept and Serenade II are planned. So Jacob will take his sculptures on, he's planning on January 12th, and then Ghiberto will come in probably about a month later. And then the only other thing is there is another submittal. This one's by our friend Richard Starks, who you may know has been a part of our art walk for many years. His two pieces now on the art walk are Love Wine and Goose Egg. So Goose Egg is timing out, and so I asked him to submit another piece, and this is the piece he sent. I love the color. I don't know if there are any questions about it, but it's before you.
I just was, I was like, I've seen this before. We had this sculpture, but it was the patinaed metal. It was very similar.
It was very similar.
I love the red.
I love the red, too.
And the squares and bases are a little bit different, right?
Yeah, a little bit.
This is taller.
Yeah. No, that's lovely.
Sure. This is taller. I know. I know. I think it's a continuing theme that works for him, and it works, I think.
Rhonda, where is the Subcommittee thinking of locating Stacked?
That's a good question, Jeffrey. As always, we've got some flexibility. It would fit on the pad as you enter Vandeleer Park. There hasn't been a piece there in quite some time. I tend to like them a little more subtle there, but we've had red pieces before, and it certainly would fit. Do you have any thoughts about that, Cindy? Or anywhere?
No, but we have a whole bunch of options. I mean, Spyroll is going out, and I know that, you know, you mentioned having the other piece, but Spyroll is almost hidden there. This would be a little bit brighter. Also, where Goose Egg is, you know, we had something yellow there before.
It's not very wide, is the thing. It's only like 20 by 20.
How tall is it?
It's about six and a half feet, somewhere, 80 something inches. Yeah. So yes, it certainly would fit on one of those.
And we have some empty pads, too.
And we have something like eight or nine pads coming before June, so, with pieces coming and going. So I know there's an opportunity in town. This one, you know, like most of them, we will put in the bank until we can actually decide where we think the best place for it is and when we're going to get it. He said it's readily available. His Goose Egg, I think, is timing out middle of this month, so it's a piece we could get in fairly quickly, or just ask him to wait until we find the right place.
I just wonder about going in where Spyroll is with this bright red, paying, kind of bringing attention to the whole art walk piece, but maybe it's too much for that, I don't know.
The issue with that, the issue with that, and my, it's just my opinion, the piece by Ghiberto is a taller piece because it's on a 24-inch pedestal, which clears the shrubbery in front of the piece. If we would put, were to put this piece there, we would lose the solid 24 inches, if not 30, depending on the time of year. And then the piece kind of disappears. That's what happened with Spyroll. And we had a beautiful piece by Laurie Akot, their gorgeous piece, but she was lost up to her thigh. So that's the reasoning for putting his piece there and this piece. Maybe we'll find another place. It's going to show up no matter where we put it because it's the right color, and I think it's, I think it's a great addition to the art walk.
I would agree.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve stacked by Richard Starks?
So moved.
A second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay, thank you for your acceptance of the sculpture, and we're still, I'm still looking at other sculptures. There's still, we have applications. Sam sent, just sent something off of Art Call. I have to get to you. And so there's still work to be done, and we've got a lot of pads coming up, so... So if there's nothing else or no questions on art walk, Jim?
Okay.
Literary?
I mean, gallery.
I mean, gallery.
Thank you. So you have the schedule that we currently have in place in front of you, and on Thursday night at 5:30, we have the opening reception for our Find Your Heart in Yountville exhibit, and it's, we installed it today. It looks fabulous in the gallery, so I hope all of you can attend. And there's some other parts to it. Do you want to reiterate the tie-in with the art walk, the hearts, or anything else, or what?
I was going to do that under Mustard Festival.
Okay. Yeah, that's fine.
Silvuration?
And we also have two proposed exhibits for the fall months, and let's see, where are we here? The first would be, and these are both Yountville artists, artists that live in Yountville. The first is Sherry Chikamian. The first is Sherri Chacamian. She moved up here this past year from Morgan Hill in the South Bay below, and I think Sam is showing some pictures. She's got a few in a series of wine bottles, both Napa and Bordeaux and Burgundy in France. And she does a lot of dancing figures. She's intrigued with the, the human form and dance. So that exit, proposed exhibit would open Thursday, August 10th, and close Friday, September 29th. So any questions about this Yountville-based artist?
Only to point out that she also has a piece in our gallery, in the hearts exhibition that we just hung. It's a beautiful rose, so you get the idea of her range, which seems to be pretty wide, and I think will make an interesting show.
Yeah, exactly. And I think she, the, the rose, in addition to what you see up here, there's a lot of color in her paintings, so I think you'll find them interesting. So any other comments? Or do we have a motion?
I move to accept. Sherri?
Chacamian.
Chacamian.
I second.
So, all in favor?
Aye.
Knows? Thank you.
Thank you. And our second artist is Paul Youngman, and you, some of you may remember him, or most of you may remember him as being in our last, this past year's Art Sip and Stroll, and he, he was showing his paintings in front of the community center in the plaza. He does a lot of iconic landscapes, some are plein air. He's been seen in places like the French Laundry Gardens, doing plein air painting with his little stand-up palette, or easel, artist easel. And so I think in some of the views, you'll notice, happen to be of our town. So I think this will be an interesting exhibit. And his exhibit, where am I? Oh, yeah. Thank you. So, yeah, October 5th through December 1st. Didn't have that right in front of me. So do we have a motion?
I move we accept Paul Youngman. I ended up interviewing him for an up-close and personal a lot long ago, and I really like his work. I highly recommend him.
Could I also make a comment before we vote? And that is, I think it is an honor to have Paul Youngman in our gallery, in our Steve Rogers Gallery at Community Center. He's a very noted artist. He's, he's been in galleries for quite a long time. His wife owned a gallery in Calistoga for many years, and then they also owned a gallery in Ojai. And she's an incredible professional gallerist, and I'm happy they've moved to our town. And also, just, I'm absolutely thrilled that Paul will be in our galleries. I highly suggest that we approve.
Well, then I second.
Thank you. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
And, yeah, do I need?
Let the record reflect that Judy Meredith was also an aye on her way out.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you, Jim.
Thank you, everybody.
Yeah.
Yeah, thanks, Jim.
Jim?
So we are, oh, sorry. No, go ahead. We are booked out through 2023 now, is that correct?
That is correct. We, and we'll end the year again with our youth art exhibit in December of 2023.
So I nudged Jim a little bit over the holidays about, did we have our year filled out? And he said, well, I was taking, you know, kind of waiting, and then within hours, I started, I got a couple of emails that both slots were booked, talk about clout. And, and so, no, I really appreciated that you just jumped on that. And also, I think it speaks to the quality that we're, we're providing in our gallery that artists like these two want to be in them. So, thanks, Jim.
Plus, it's nice to have these quality artists being hometown artists as well.
Yes, all of that. So Jeffrey, did you move to accept?
Yes.
Okay. I second it?
We voted.
And we voted? Oh, I'm sorry. Okay. All right. So we're done.
Good.
Literary, subcommittee, Jeffrey?
PJ, do you want to update on the Shot Down event?
Sure. I think we were locked and loaded with everything. I know it's live on our Yountville Events site, and I went out and I RSVP'd, and I, you can forward it, the invitation, if you want, via Facebook, which I've sent that out to some people, and, so anyway, everything's all set. He's excited to, to get here. The only other thing, I'm still working on just finalizing, is with the Veterans Home to see if any of the surviving World War II veterans might be able to attend, and also just to make sure that transportation is in place, so that veterans that want to be able to attend can make it there.
You've done an outstanding job of pulling this together.
Thank you.
You made it easy for, at least for me, I assume, Sam, every, all the information.
Well, thank you. Everybody's been super supportive and helpful, so I wouldn't have been able to do it by myself, so thank you.
Great.
In terms of the Legacy event, we're pretty much set for February 23rd. We'll have Bob Steinhauer, Mike Moon, Doug Hill, and Pete Richmond as our four guests, honored guests. Press release has been drafted and working on, and Sam's working on getting it set up for selling tickets. We have kind of figured out the positions in terms of the four tables. Because of Sam's creativity and knowing everything is available, we'll be able to have a roundtable of 12 instead of 10, which will allow us to have 10 guests, and the, the guest presenter or discussion leader, as well as a volunteer at each table to help with things. We're, if you are interested in attending as a part of this, we have possible places that we could use some help as volunteers, if you'd just let me know. We can have that discussion of, of how you might fit in. We'd love to have everyone here be in attendance. Judy and I will both be here. She's going to kind of lead things off, and I assume kind of finish up as well at the, at the end of that. We didn't, I don't remember talking about that, but there's a lot of things I don't remember, so that may be a possibility.
It's my excuse.
Look, I had a sympathetic muscle difficulty for you. I'm also borrowing your excuse. At any rate, we are moving along with that. We've settled on a $30 ticket price, which we want to keep for our expenses and base it on that. At the same time, it may have to be raised in the future, but we're going to try and do that. This first round, all of the wine is, is going to be donated, but we know that there'll be events where they won't all be donated, so we're trying to kind of figure out a medium price for that. I was going to send around a description of each of those four people, but I'm not quite ready for that, just because they haven't all been approved, and I don't want to get out until each of the presenters have finalized their discussion. One of them has, but not all four. We're also working on headshots that we will use, and there'll be a kind of a program that outlines information about them. Are there any questions about the event?
What's the theme, again? I was looking for.
It's based on people who have made changes in viticulture.
Viticulture?
Yeah.
Fine wine growing, basically. So some of them are growers, and some of them are actually, well, one of the gentlemen that we have, Mike Moon, he's actually somebody who was pushing this, because previous to these guys coming onto the scene, they weren't growing good grapes, and they weren't looking for good places for them. So it's going to be, I think it's going to be fascinating.
And he's kind of been involved in both sides of it, and not just the one, so.
Yeah, he's a.
Why we're comfortable.
He's a wine grower also, right now.
And been a kind of a Renaissance person, as I recall the title that you added, that I think is, is great. Any other questions? Okay.
Thank you. Thank you, Jeffrey, for all of your work on this, and Judy, from the sidelines, when you could. It is going to be, the people are fabulous. I think it's going to be fascinating, so, great job. Thank you for bringing it to us. Okay. Marketing, Noel?
Well, just when I thought I was getting caught up, Jim, you have all these new gallery shows opening.
You've got time to market them.
We'll have to get working on those. An exciting element coming up for us is, we had a fam tour, maybe last year, even the year before, and we had a travel writer and video talent on KRON, Dana Rebman, who, who we took on a fam tour. And she was quite taken with the Art Walk, and I've stayed in touch with her, and she's always there to support us. She did a lovely piece on KRON about the Art Walk, and I just connected with her. Again, she's writing an article for San Francisco SF Gate, and she feels there's a place for Art Walk in it, so I sent her a bunch of stuff, and she submitted the article. She's waiting for edits, and fingers crossed, we should have a nice article coming up in SF Gate. Not sure exactly when yet, but she said she'll be in touch to give me the date when that's happening, so I'll keep everyone posted with that. Canvas, our, our new PR, PR and marketing element for Yountville Arts, has been doing a great job for us. We got off to a little bit of a rough start, but that's because they had some new management in, and, and I have to say that Colby really stepped up to get us going as soon as she realized what was going on. And we had placement for Shop the Yountville Art Walk every week in December, and the very first week, it was like top, center, in-your-face, you couldn't miss it, so that was really nice. Primarily promoting the Art Walk to everybody, the concierge, people who read it, so many people get it. And it's really great to see the Yountville Art Walk there, it just maintains our presence out in the community. So we've got more things posting with them, and they've been very receptive to what we send. Find Your Heart in Yountville, the Glass Hearts event, posting in Napa Valley Life, Napa Marketplace, Chamber, and also Canvas, it will be coming up. With Canvas, you have to really do it the week before, so it's timely. And, and some of the calendars, I like to get it out there earlier, so people can be aware it's coming up. So those are the places we, we posted that. I also submitted it to Napa Valley Life for a paragraph in the front of the magazine. They have a calendar where you can post events, but they also have the calendar section of the magazine, where you can get placement if, if they decide it's something that's, that's of value in promoting Napa Valley. So I, I really felt that Glass Hearts, hopefully this is going to be something that we do every year, not just a one-off, and it really intrigued them. So I sent them a bunch of material, and we'll see if we can get some placement there. No guarantee, but they were certainly very interested. We'll see what happens with that. And that will happen in the Best of Napa issue, should it come out and work out.
When is that, Noel?
It's whenever their next issue up is. It should be coming pretty soon. I have trouble, because the issues are given titles, spring, summer, food and wine arts, it's hard to say exactly when they are, but I'd say it should be coming up shortly, by next month, because there will be another arts one coming up, probably April, May, so.
There's one that came in the mail today, or got picked up, and Michael might have picked it up, and it's all about food.
Food and wine. So it might be, I'll have to check that one, because I keep checking the digital all the time, and I'll see, I'll see if it's in there. But she had said Best of Napa issue, so we'll, we'll double-check on that. But that's, that's always a work in progress, you have to keep checking.
Of course it is.
On digital, and, and, but I'll check that again, just to see. Also, thank you, Rhonda and Michael, Cher. A while ago, I was thinking, we have this Glass Hearts event happening, it's really exciting, and we know these Glass Hearts, we know they're original hearts, we know they're signed, we know that they're by artist Patty Westman, we know that they're numbered. But somehow, conceptually, I was a little concerned that maybe folks might not understand what we're really doing. So I talked with Rhonda about it, and Michael took some lovely pictures of the hearts, hidden by our sculptures and our installations. So I've taken pictures that we have of our installations, and then I've taken a picture that Michael has taken, and we have them side by side, so people can understand hidden in plain sight. So there's a gorgeous picture by Vebotaro of Sidewalk Judge, and then next to it is, there's a close-up of the judge's foot with a beautiful glass heart tucked right next to it. So, so people can really get a sense, they can see the hearts, and we have some in the Mushroom Garden, we have some by the Yellow Sphere, and, and Sam has it all, and she'll be pushing it out in marketing, and social media, and signage as the event comes up. And also, the material has been shared with the Chamber, and Fuller and Sander, because everybody's really excited about this event across the board. So we're going to do everything we can to, to really promote it. And then as for the gallery show, which is happening and starting this Thursday night, we're all excited about that. It's been posted in the Chamber newsletter. We got a beautiful posting last Friday, Napa Valley Life, the Marketplace, Canvas did a beautiful posting of it, and I'll post it next door when we get a little bit closer. And, thank you, Rhonda, Yountville Sun, or is that the register? I can't tell.
No, the sun.
Yeah. It's just a reporter at large, Rhonda. And Cindy, too, working, well, I'd say that story that we had in Napa Sonoma was pretty nice, Cindy. Really appreciate everything, and as, I always encourage all of you, if there's something, please, let's talk about it, let's get it out there. And also, the importance of getting the collateral material ready as soon as possible. Sam created a beautiful piece for Shot Down when she had everything, and, and we'll be doing the same for the Legacy Series. And once I have marketing, I can start sending it out to people. And much of it, you like to get out sooner rather than later, and then again, when it's more timely and the event is coming up. Art Walk catalog, we're replacing the holiday version with the mustard version, which turns out to be more timely than ever with our mustard celebration, so we have that beautiful cover that we'll be using. And we've also begun working on the Art Sip and Stroll poster, Rhonda and I, with, with our graphic artist. So hopefully, we'll have something to share with that in a while. He's just started it, but he's good, and, and he works quickly. So we'll have that together. And Shot Down, we started posting that. Sam put together a beautiful piece of artwork for that, and we're, I posted it in Napa Valley Life and Napa Valley Marketplace, and when we're actually closer, it'll go to the Chamber, so they can post it the week before the event, or the, yeah, the week before the event, because they post on Friday, so it can't be the week of the event, because we'll miss it. So that'll be coming up. And let's see, the Legacy Roundtable, we had a meeting, as, as you discussed, Jeffrey, and it was, it was valuable to us to, Rhonda was there, I was there, Jeff, obviously you were there, Sam was there, we were sorry, Judy, we understand that, that you were unable to attend. But we were really able to focus on what the event is, it's all developed now, and, and it was really helpful for us in terms of continuing to market and understand how to market, understand what it is. I know Sam is working on, on collateral material now, so we'll be starting to push that out very soon, as soon as we get it. And I think that's it.
I have one question. Can we find a heart in Hartville, on Yountville?
Can we?
Can, as a commissioner, can I find a heart? I want a heart in Yountville. I want a, I want to find one.
Well, you might find one where you're not looking. However, the weekend that you hide them should not be the weekend that you find one.
No, I agree with that.
You can follow me around, follow me.
That would be breaking the rules.
Thank you.
Can I ask, do we put them by the artwork, or, I mean, is there a specific, are we going to talk about that going forward, or?
Well, they are going to go around the sculptures. And at this point, I'm thinking along Washington Street only, which I'm sorry about, because we have some great pieces on Yount, so I, I could be, I could go either way. But each time they're scattered is only 28. So that's not a lot to spread up and down Washington Street. So that's not a lot to spread up and down Washington Street.
And we don't care if somebody gets six in one hall.
I don't know what we can do about that.
Unless you really hide them in in the shrubbery or something.
Which, you know, you could do half and half. And then you'd always know where to go.
I'm just thinking, you know, like in the morning, when you see, sometimes there'll be families with kids, right? But I guess it is what it is, right? So.
I think it is. And as long as they have the pleasure from finding them and enjoying them and remember town because of them, then we've done our job.
But it also might be a point of hiding a few on Yount Street, just to have a little more options for more people.
I'm totally open to that. Yep.
How does everyone feel about the possibility? I'm not sure how I feel about it yet. I'd like to discuss it of of asking one per person, please.
I don't know how we would do that.
I think you could, I mean, in marketing material.
That's the honor system.
Maybe we're talking about the signage that goes out or the stickers that go out on the sidewalk. You could, but you can't really enforce it.
No, you're going to set yourself up for disappointment. And I'm only saying that because of where I work and the business I'm in. There's language barriers, you know, there's children, there's all kinds of things. And everybody wants one if there's a a group like that. So, you know, we're going to get a lot of those bridal parties coming in and.
Sometimes the more you say, the more opportunity you give people to violate your rules. So I, you know, we can all.
This year will be a learning experience for all of us.
It will.
I think the fact that we're doing it is going to be very exciting and 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 we'll see what happens. And we have to be sure people are aware they're there, which we're doing our best. And they're really beautiful. They're they're just, they're wonderful. So we'll see what happens.
Should we put something on the audio tour? Because, you know, the QR code goes to the audio tour. People might, I mean, we could put something on the landing page of the audio tour. You found a heart. Yeah.
I would agree.
It's another way.
To engage people.
Maybe we could put something on like a tag that says, take your photo and post it on our site, right? Like we do at the, you have a QR code for that so we can get pictures of all the people with their hearts.
Well, in our collateral material, we have that. And not, we don't, we don't have a QR code, but we we have the hashtags saying, post your picture.
But yeah, I think integrating it for that time period into the Art Walk, I think the Art Walk Audio Tour would be great, the landing page.
Okay.
Yeah.
I do too.
It's just another way for people to know what we're doing.
Okay, I'll I'll ask you, I'll work on copy with you.
So all of the above. Thank you, Noel, for another amazing marketing report and effort.
I know, I don't know how you have time to do anything else.
I enjoy it.
I I have to say, you're all amazing, every one of your projects, all of you, just absolutely. I'm I'm so fortunate to be your chair. Okay, the Performing Arts Subcommittee, I think, Jeffrey, you kind of put into literary literary, which is where we all kind of want to keep finding it. So was there anything else in that committee? We don't have a chair, but I don't.
Not that I know of.
I could just add, PJ and I met and went over a lot of information from last year. And I think she is off and running as far as finding musical acts for the next.
Yes, for Art Sip and Stroll as well as Music in the Park. So it's underway.
It's underway.
Lots of people that are chomping at the bit, that would like to play. And I've spoken to a few so far. And yeah, it's moving forward. I think we're in good shape.
About the same number as we had last year or?
Yes, I think we're looking at a total of eight acts for this Art Sip and Stroll.
Fantastic.
Two time slots, four different locations. Potentially one that might be a roving one, if if we can make that happen.
Love that idea.
So we'll see. No promises, but we'll see.
Okay, then Mustard Celebration Subcommittee is me. There is a lot out there. And and I wanted to point out that other than the time for going to meetings and working with Jessel and and the other art professionals, there's no cost to us. And yet you can go on the website, you can find our events. I've yet to post Jeffrey's, he gave me the copy. You gave me the copy for Shot Down. Yeah, so I'll get those posted. So Mustard Festival is really, or Mustard Celebration is really happening this year. And we are working to grow the event. So just as examples, here's in the Napa Valley Life current or issue before, Beverly Wilson, who's the poster artist. Nice article on Beverly. She's been in the valley for a long time, one of the most prestigious artists in the valley. She also has submitted a wonderful piece for our Find Your Heart in Yountville Gallery Show, which is a great piece. So we're all really proud of Beverly. The press loves her. And so we were able to get this for her. We're also in Wine Country This Month Magazine. This again is Bev's poster art, big article. And also the calendar, which our Find Your Heart is on. They took the information off of the calendar on the website, on the celebration website in December, December 1st. So your two events missed this one, but there will continue to be others along the way. So again, you know, this is all great information and great that we're participating. And this is the poster that they have had printed. We'll have, I think, a smaller version of this at the Hearts Show opening on the 12th. But you can see it's it's very Bev Wilson and it's it's a really gorgeous piece. So and I believe the Chamber has bought a number of copies for distribution of the poster. I assume she'll be distributing those with businesses around town. So you might see that also around town. So Mustard Festival is, Mustard Celebration is cooking. And we're going to just kind of keep moving it along. We've got actually the opening event and on Jessel, Jessel does, I think it's two newsletters a month. Did you see it? Did you see it, Jim? She she did, she just sent one out a couple of days ago.
I got her mailings.
And it shows us being the lead off event. It mentions Find Your Heart in Yountville and our and our opening on the 12th. So that was great of her to put that on hers. That's something that she owns and she does for her gallery. So it was great to have her do that. So the the other thing on the Mustard Celebration is just to remind you all of the calendar, when you're going to scatter. And if anybody has any time conflicts, just, you know, let me know. So.
Do you see us scattering the day before or?
I see you in the dark of night scattering them. Do you agree?
I see myself in the dark of night.
In the dark of night, yes. Hoodies. Oh, they're at it. Oh, it must be the commission.
Now, I know we have two dates listed. Is it, are we thinking that maybe we do 14 of them one night and 14 another night or?
Or whatever.
Perhaps.
Perhaps, if you choose to.
Okay.
I mean, it depends on your time.
Got it.
We can't divulge our scattering patterns.
Because people will know when to find them.
I just know Jeff is going to be stalking.
Well, Cindy, you've done this sort of thing before with boxes, right?
Yeah. I think night, early morning, you know, people are not up very early in Yountville. So if you go out at 7:00, 7:30, you know, it's the equivalent of the dark of night.
As long as you avoid Bouchon.
Yeah.
Yes.
Well, we have, we do have a sculpture there, but I'll leave all that up to you. The sculptures you include.